Seven thirty-one, I'd like to call the order, the November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Olbridge Township Planning Board Meeting, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danny, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Agopian?
Here.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. René Azapsin, Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. McIsaac?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Here.
And Mr. Farrar?
Here.
And Chairman Lauer?
Here.
Okay, swearing in of our professionals will be our first item.
Uh, our four professionals, please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening?
It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, first item tonight is discussion of our two thousand and twenty-six Planning Board Meeting Schedule. Do we have any, uh, changes or suggested changes or deletions? Okay, Mr. Brennan?
We may want to reconsider the May twenty-eighth. We may want to consider it.
The May twenty-eighth.
Okay. And?
Because of the holiday, the, the next Monday?
Okay.
I think Memorial Day is the prior Monday, Monday prior.
Okay, excuse me then.
Oh, it's prior. Yeah, 'cause that following Monday is June first.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you anyway. Any, any, any other suggestions on this? Do we need to vote on this?
Um, yes, we usually vote on, on, yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Okay, we have the minutes of September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Okay, resolutions, first one, fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three P, Vision Olbridge Urban Renewal LLC. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Next, eighteen dash twenty twenty-five P, Olbridge Regency Village LLC.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Uh, next, fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four P, Fat Car Properties LLC.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Uh, next, thirteen dash twenty twenty-five P, Peters Ziminy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. And last, eighteen dash twenty twenty-five P, Olbridge Regency Village Incorporated.
Move it. Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Okay, um, first, we have an announcement for anybody that's here for application zero-four twenty twenty-five P.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, we've, uh, the board received a request for an adjournment of that hearing. Um, oh, yeah. It's not picking up. Um, an adjournment of the, of the hearing on this application. Um, they had received the board's professional report as of yesterday, and they need time to go through it, review it, and try to adjust, address the comments that are in there. So, that, uh, application's gonna be adjourned to the February, excuse me, the February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six, uh, Planning Board Hearing, uh, Planning Board Meeting Date. Uh, so, anyone here in the public that's here on that application, please be advised that the new date for that hearing is gonna be scheduled for February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six, at seven thirty at this location. Uh, and unless anything changes, no further public notice will be provided on that application. It will be, oh, excuse me.
We require an applicant to renotice when it crosses the year, so since it is February, I would say that they need to renotice.
That, that's fine, I know they had requested if we could announce it, that it wouldn't have to be renoticed, but if it's our policy that they have to re-
Yes, it's our policy, and with the, uh, the number of comments and the kind of comments, I'm expecting there will be some changes to the site plan as well. So, I would prefer that we follow the protocol and we have them renotice. And there is a huge crowd that is interested in the project, so it just makes sense that notice be sent.
Okay, uh, and, Mr. Chairman, unless any of the members of the board have any objection, we will require them to renotice, so Danny, when we advise them of the new date, can we advise them that they will have to renotice for that application? So, correction on my prior comment, if you're here for that application, you will obtain, uh, new notice for the new date, which is, uh, currently scheduled for February twenty-sixth.
Okay, no objections, correct? Okay, very good. Okay, first application up tonight, thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four P, Fox Houses LLC, uh, represented by David Himmelman Esquire. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, David Himmelman is the applicant.
Yeah, 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 he has to turn green. Give it a sec.
It's temper metal.
Maybe it's my heart's fault.
Here, we get your flash screen before.
There it is, okay.
Hit the lottery. Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh, members of the board and your professionals. David Himmelman for the applicant, and, is the mic working? Am I picking it up? Okay, great, okay. Um, as you know, the applicant is Fox Houses LLC, and the applicant has applied to your board for major preliminary and final site plan, would see bulk variance approval, and for the record, the block is nineteen thousand, lots seven point one-one on your tax map, and the physical address is eight twenty-one Marlborough Road. Uh, as you know from the application, we propose to demolish the existing single-family dwelling on the property and construct a three-unit residential building. The property is located in the AF Apartment Family Residential Zone. The proposed residential units are permitted, are permitted use under the AF zone. There are several variances that the applicant seeks bulk variances, which are identified, um, in your professional review memorandum. Uh, their minimum lot area, minimum lot width, side yard, rear yard, uh, resident, non-residential landscape buffer, and refuse storage, which we will discuss. As you know from the prior meetings, um, after your, uh, environmental, after your, sorry, your engineer had prepared a memorandum, uh, back in June, we had a TRC meeting in August with, with, with them and staff, and we discussed at length the proposed plan, and subsequent to the, uh, TRC, uh, the applicant had further input from your plan of Vena, and it was recommended to modify, and she, she felt that the plan should be modified, that the parking adjacent to the units, not across the aisle with a single two-way drive access near Route eighteen, would not be proposed anymore. So, we have revised the plans to reflect many of Vena's comments, and, uh, I know that your engineer did issue a new memorandum, uh, dated November twelfth, which obviously we will go through in detail. And I have two witnesses, Mr. Chairman, Mark Lieber, who will, who will be our engineer and planner, and Erwin Pfeifer, who is our architect on the project, and if you or your board members or your professionals don't have any questions, we can proceed with Mr. Lieber. We good?
Yeah.
I wish you please to raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please just state and spell your name for the record.
It's Mark with a C, and my last name is Lieber, L-E-B-E-R.
Mr. Lieber, good evening. Uh, we want to qualify you as a professional engineer and planner, would you give a brief background and your CV and confirm that your licenses are current? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I graduated from Drexel University with a degree in civil engineering. I completed the MBA program at Rutgers Grad School and was licensed in two thousand and three as an engineer, in two thousand and five as a planner, and two thousand and six, I completed the Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate Program. Uh, testified before this board in the past, and the zoning board as well.
You've been before us before, you're accepted.
Thank you, thank you very much, good to be back.
Mr. Lieber, before we get into your testimony, do you have any exhibits that you would like to have marked that were not previously submitted as part of the application?
I only have one, it's a two-page handout of photos that were taken of the property.
So, we'll mark that, is it a packet?
Yeah, they're-
We'll just, we'll mark the whole packet as A-one.
A-one. Mr. Lieber, obviously, you're going to get into your testimony about the, uh, the site plan and the various aspects covering all the proposed improvements, and the revised layout, and also work through the comments in, uh, ERI's memorandum, so I will turn the floor over to you.
Alrighty, um, so you already heard, it's block nineteen thousand, lot seven point one-one, this is eight-two-one Marlborough Road, quite an unusual location, actually, and this lot is unusually shaped in itself. It's point six-two acres, uh, in your AF zone, that's the Apartment Family Residential Zone. Uh, if you look at the existing conditions plan, which is sheet two of our plan set, you'll notice that the property has a little bit of frontage, about a hundred and sixty feet on Marlborough Road, and then it has a hundred and twenty-two feet on Route eighteen. There's no direct access to the highway, however, the current configuration is, there's a single-family dwelling in the middle of the property, and then there's a U-shaped driveway, um, and that U-shaped driveway, I want to say the easterly exit funnels right into Route eighteen, you can only make a right turn out of the property. The other part of the driveway, um, which is on the western side, you can make a right or a left. If you were to make a left, it goes on Marlborough Road, which is in itself a big U, which goes right back out to Route eighteen. So, the location's a little unusual. Next door, our neighbor to the right, is a single-family dwelling. Beyond that, there are apartment buildings, and, uh, if you look to the south of our property, which would be the top of our plan, there's a piece of property, about sixty-eight acres, that's owned by Middlesex County. We have, uh, two existing non-conformities in the zone, you need six acres, we have point six-two acres, and minimum lot width required's three hundred feet, and we have two hundred and thirty-seven feet. Just go to the photos here, taken of the existing dwelling on the property, the top photo is, uh, just the front of the house, you'll see the driveway in the foreground, that's the portion of the driveway that kind of funnels right into, uh, the on-ramp to Route eighteen. The bottom photo is looking back toward Marlborough Road, and you see the other driveway that you can either go left or right out of. In the distance, on the left, you see our neighbor, that's a single family. And then the next page, also the front of the house, this is looking, um, into the property from the driveway that's, um, wet, uh, east, the east driveway, and then the bottom photo is just a picture of the backyard showing the current condition of the, uh, house and the property.
And just for identification purposes, uh, these photos were taken by you?
Yeah.
And, uh, can you give us approximately a date when they were taken?
Uh, actually, I can, we were scheduled to be heard on the, um, no, it was, uh, were we on the September hearing date? It was the morning-
September twenty-fifth.
It was that day, it was that morning.
June twenty-sixth.
So, if you go over to sheet three of our plan set, this is what's proposed. Um, it's a three-unit residence, we are working at keeping the existing foundation of that building, so the location would remain unchanged. The, uh, units would have each their own entrance, uh, they would also have each a small deck in the rear, uh, and then in front of the property, we're creating a new parking s- uh, lot for eight cars. Uh, we have a central corral for refuse, which will be in the form of cans, and those cans could be put out curbside, uh, on pickup days. We have, uh, some additional improvements that are proposed, namely landscaping and lighting for this parking lot, as well as, uh, a new fire hydrant that was requested by the, uh, Fire Department, and in addition, we'll be providing sewer to this building, currently it's on septic, um, we'll be bringing new water connections in and, uh, putting up a fence along the back of the property. Now, one of the things that's changing is we are going to be removing the configuration that's there today where you actually have a U-shaped driveway, so this is gonna be a two-way driveway into the property, uh, with eight parking spaces, uh, and we will not have access, uh, that would be to the east anymore, to the street. Um, any questions at this point? Okay. I did get a copy of the report, which was dated November twelfth, um, from the Township Department of, uh, Planning. We actually, I'm just gonna jump down to page three where the variances begin. There are some variances, three in, in this report that I want to point out specifically that are associated with the application, the first is the minimum side yard setback. This zone requires a fifty-foot side yard setback. Right now, the house that's there is thirty-eight point five feet, and we're asking for a small reduction to thirty-eight feet for the side yard. Um, on the rear yard, the minimum required setback is fifty feet. Right now, the way the house is configured, the setback is about twenty-four feet to the deck, and seventeen feet, um, I'm sorry, I have that backwards, it's twenty-four feet to the house and about seventeen feet to the existing deck. That deck's gonna come down, um, but based upon the layout that we provided, we're requesting a rear yard setback of twenty-seven point six-three feet to the house corner, but twenty-four point oh-five feet to the deck. So, it's a slight improvement, but we cannot provide fifty feet. I, I don't see either of these variances creating any detriments, uh, namely because the rear yard is backing up to a sixty-eight acre vacant parcel that's owned by Middlesex County, and our side yard setback to the neighbor on, I believe it's lot six, or lot five, sorry, is being reduced by six inches, which I don't really think is perceptible as compared to what's there today. There's another variance regarding a non-residential landscape buffer, and it states that any property developed for use other than a single-family detached dwelling or open space, you're required to provide a fifty-foot wide buffer measured from the property line along any adjoining property to a single-family dwelling, so technically, the dwelling to our right, we would have to have a fifty-foot buffer, and as I stated a moment ago, our building is within that buffer in itself, we're at thirty-eight feet. We're asking relief from this, um, and I think it's an unusual requirement only because the heading of that section is a non-residential landscape buffer, but our use is actually a residential use, so it's really a residential use next to another residential use. So, I don't think there's any conflicts, we're not certainly creating any kind of a nuisance, uh, in that sense. Now, there was a other item noted for a refuse storage variance, which we would like to comply with, so we don't need to request that variance anymore, and that's regarding screening and covering over the refuse area, so we'll comply with that. Just to look at the design waivers, I'm now on page four, we are requesting the waivers from curbing the entire property, um, we are providing new curbing along the frontage, uh, we are not offering or providing curbing in this new parking area. On item six, that waiver was removed since we had reduced the number of driveways onto Marlborough Road. Item seven, there's a requirement that you can't have a driveway within fifty feet of the sidelines of two intersecting streets, so if you counted Marlborough Road as an intersecting street, we have now complied with that because we eliminated the driveway that was near to Route eighteen, so seven's not required either. Sidewalk, there is no sidewalk along Route eighteen over here, and we were not providing sidewalk to Route eighteen, in this type of, uh, request, I usually leave it up to the board if they were to mandate sidewalk, or perhaps have a contribution to a sidewalk fund, uh, you know, I'd leave that up to the board. Item nine is a requirement that parking stalls be ten by twenty, and we will comply with that, so we're not gonna request a waiver from item nine, we currently show nine by eighteen, but we will increase them to ten by twenty. Item ten, uh, this is a particular, uh, concern with regard to NJDOT highway access. We have a separate traffic engineer involved who's in the middle of the permitting process with the NJDOT, and the project does qualify for a minor access permit, only because there's a portion of Marlborough Road and the driver that funnels into Route eighteen that's under their jurisdiction, so we would be happy to provide the permit once it's issued. Item eleven is requiring a backup area of ten feet, we'll comply with that, so we are not asking for a waiver for item eleven. Um, the next item, twelve, um, this is a interesting requirement, it's about light pole spacing. You're allowed to have light poles spaced equal four times the height, so our poles are fifteen feet, we kept them on the lower end because it's a residential use, um, which means the spacing would have to be sixty feet, but our spacing is less than sixty feet, so technically, we need a waiver. The reason that we need that waiver is because the lower your pole is, the more poles you need because the spread of the light on the ground is more controlled, so I think that, you know, this is really, uh, a minor detail. That was the, the rest of the waivers. I do want to note, uh, pretty much in one statement, that all the general comments in the report, many of them are just statements, some of them are statements that the item no longer applies or has been addressed, um, and all, any comments that require a plan revision, we do intend to comply with. So, I do want to note that some of the items refer to architecture, which you'll hear from the architect in a moment, but I don't really take any issue to the letter, ever since we revised these set of plans and transmitted them to the township on October thirty-first, a lot of the items of concern have actually just gone away. So, you know, unless there's specific questions from the board as to each and every one of these items, you know, I would say that we're looking to comply with all of them. You will hear testimony that we are exempt from the accessibility and ADA requirements due to the number of units proposed. We do have an approval from the Fire Department for the fire truck access circulation, as well as the installation of a new hydrant, which is right in front of this property. And then lastly, I've been in constant contact with the OBMUA, um, to provide sewer to this building, is under their jurisdiction, the sewer line in the street is a forced main, but they had left- The sewer line in the street is a forced main, but they had left the connection under a prior project to allow for this property to connect, which we're trying to design really what it is, that we're connecting a forced main to a forced main. So it's a different design than a typical gravity design. I think that pretty much covers, I mean, landscaping, lighting comments, we have no problem addressing. There were some suggestions to change the types of plants. That's all fine. We will need a permit from Freoled Soil Conservation District, and I think that's really it. Item eighty-one and on starts administrative requirements, which are pretty much consistent with any application that comes before the board. So just in essence, really what we're doing is we're trying to keep the size and shape of the existing outside area. We want to rebuild it, make it a three-unit building. We're going to have off-street parking. We're going to have landscaping, lighting, trash areas, individual ingress and egress for each of the units, as well as, you know, adequate fire access. Like said, this is a very unusual location. Some of our relief we're requesting is due to the unusual shape of the property, as well as, you know, the fact that I don't feel that there's any detriment or whatnot for this landscape buffer not being provided or curbing on the interior site.
Okay. Thank you for that information. We're going to go to our professionals. Mr. Darji, would you like to go first?
Sure. I don't have any questions with applicant's engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dina?
I don't have any questions, except for, actually Eric just asked me a question, and I think I gave him the right answer. How much is each unit square feet wise? Less than around two thousand square feet?
I defer that to Erwin. Can I, I just want to ask Erwin.
Each unit's twelve-hundred-and-twenty-six.
Yeah, it's twelve-hundred-and-twenty-six.
It's one-two-two-six. Twelve-twenty-six.
Total?
Each.
Each unit.
Yes, each unit. The first, it looks like the first floor is five-eighty, and the second floor is six-forty-six. And we have a colored rendering, which has all that detail on it, we're going to hand
Any more questions? Dina, are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, am I right?
I just, I actually had a question for our professionals. Dina, or the sidewalk, do, did we not have a plan to have sidewalks going up eighteen? Or am I misremembering something?
Rokesh and I were just talking about the sidewalk. We did have discussions when we were reviewing the RD management.
Dina, your, your mic, just make sure.
Sorry.
That's okay.
When.
Got it.
So when, when we were discussing RD management, that project, we were requiring them to put sidewalk on the other side because there's a Walmart across the street, and there were crosswalks. But here, I was just looking at the aerials. In this section, there is nothing. So to have them connect, and the property that is adjacent is the county property, I don't see that. If it was a private property, I would have required them to do a sidewalk so that then when this vacant land gets developed, I would have required that property owner to put in sidewalk. But since it's a county property, it just doesn't make sense. I think it would make more sense to have at least sidewalk along the opposite side where the Foxboro development is and Ferry Road goes in, because there you'll see more pedestrian activity.
Eric, are you?
Yeah, no, I just wanted clarification. I know we did have conversations about it, and if we are eventually going to have sidewalks, that we would need to have it required for this.
You're finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anybody on my left have a question for the applicant's testimony?
Is it done?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Did you say that you're trying to keep that on the original footprint of the old house, right? Basically, give or take?
I believe there is a little adjustment in the front of the footprint to accommodate the new porches and the entrances, but for the most part, the overall dimensions of that three-unit building are identical to the existing single-family home.
Okay. And my other question, when you come out of that driveway, can, can you make a left on Marlborough Road? Is it, is it two-way on?
You can make a left there, but when you follow it around, it just sends you back onto Route Eighteen anyway.
Unless you go into.
Unless you go to the apartments.
Apartment, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
We're going to open it up to the public now. Anybody from the public have a question for this testimony? See no hands, I close the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lieber. Thank you.
Yep, there's no questions, I mean, I'll.
Don't go anywhere.
I'll still be here.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Erwin Pfeifer, who's our project architect, and we could have him sworn in and qualified. You good, Erwin?
I'm good.
When you're ready, could you swear, I raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please just state your name and spell it for the record?
Erwin Pfeifer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Pfeifer. Would you just give us a brief background of your CV and your qualifications in architecture and your license status, please, so we can have you qualified as an expert? Thank you.
Certainly. I got my degree in architect from the City College in New York, nineteen-sixty-five, and became a licensed architect in New Jersey, nineteen-seventy-two, and I'm currently licensed.
Good standing.
Still good standing, yeah. Still pushing the pencil, yeah.
You're accepted.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. So I know you've brought some exhibits with you, and I guess we could mark those A-two. And there are, Mr. Pfeifer, there's two sheets of that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So why don't, here, I'll take these, and I will. I think we have enough. It's the same, it's the same of what he submitted, but it's colored, because I think the board engineer asked for that in his memorandum, in their memorandum. If we don't have enough, I, we have.
Yeah, I have a couple more. I have one here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. We might be one short. Mr. Pfeifer, while we're handing out the exhibit, if you would, if you would go over the details from an architectural standpoint of the proposed units, you know, going through the floor plan, design, elevations, et cetera, and the general layout, and then we can get into any questions. Thank you.
All right. The existing building is about twenty-nine feet deep by sixty feet wide. It's a single-family house, and we divided it into three, three units, twenty feet wide, and we added about four and a half to six feet in the back, to the rear of the building to accommodate the kitchen area. And we added a deck to the back of the building on each of the units. Each unit has a basement with recreation and utilities, which window out their back. There's no exterior exit or entrance to the basement. And the first floor consists of an entry porch. We, over the existing basement, we recessed an entry porch, and, and we also added, it's an open plan on the first floor with a living room, dining room, and kitchen. The dining room opens out onto a ten-by-ten deck, which is a couple of feet above grade. The second floor is three bedrooms and a bath. And the building is sixty feet wide, as I mentioned, and the, we divided each unit into, the building into three spaces, each twenty feet wide. And recessed, in order not to have a continuous facade and to conform with the intent of the ordinance, we recessed the porch, if we go to A-two-oh-one. We recessed the porch, divided the building so that it looks like three, the scale down from sixty-feet-wide building to basically a series of ten-foot-wide elements. We have the entry with the protruding gable, dormer up above, and, and each of the units, about every ten feet, then is, one of the units is flipped, we have it at twenty feet. So we more than achieved the requirement for breaking up the facade of the building. We do that also in the back of the building, where the, where the recess is for the kitchen and the protrusion of the decks. And the, by the way, the second floor of the building in the front will also protrude out a little bit to give it a, so you create a vertical element of the entry porch with the bedroom and dormer on the top. And the exterior will be, is vinyl, vinyl siding, earth-tone vinyl siding. The porches will have a stone veneer, and the wood decks in the back are just, they'll be enclosed underneath the deck, but there will be no storage underneath the deck. So I answered some of the comments at the same time.
And, Mr. Pfeifer, just for the record, the, the building, the building dimensions, if you could just put that on the record also?
Yes, yeah, the building, the, each, each unit is twelve-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet. The total area of the building is, the total footprint is about four thousand square feet, forty-four hundred.
Okay.
Forty-four hundred square feet. It's, the State Uniform Construction Code exempts a residential building with three or less units in a single building from the barrier-free code. We are not required to provide a access to the building. The units do not have to be handicapped accessible, and the parking, it does not have to provide, we do not have to provide for a handicap spots in the parking lot.
And is there access from, to the basement from the rear of the building?
No.
Okay. And the, the other comment in the memorandum from the RI was comment number fourteen, which had to do with the, the building shall have not more than two dwelling units in line without setbacks or breaks, but that's been addressed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, let's see, the lighting, we, on the building, we are required to have lighting on the porch at the entrance to the building, and also we will have a light fixture on the back of the building at the entrance from the, to the deck from the, from the dining There was a question of, it suggested maybe we should put steps down from the deck to the grade, and we're amenable to that. And if we have to put an additional fixture nearby, depending on where we put it, we certain, it would be a local fixture for the stairway.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Do you think you've covered all the architectural aspects and your testimony? Is there anything else you want to add?
I think so. Yeah, we covered, I covered everything in general, all the items that were, that were suggested in the report.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any further questions, Mr. Pfeifer, but you or your board members or professionals might. I turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to our professionals. Mr. Darji?
I don't have any questions with applicant's architect, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sawan?
I don't have any questions either.
Anybody to my right?
Just a quick question on the basement windows, are they, the back, the egress windows are in the back for the basement? Are they full egress?
Yes, if the grade permits, they will be egress.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody on my left have a question for this witness? Ed?
Mr. Pfeifer, on the elevation, the second page of your drawing, on the west and the east elevations, I see three windows. I understand the first floor, but I'm not sure about the horizontal window and then a window above that. Is that a vaulted space, or is that top window in an attic?
Yes, that's just an attic window. It's.
To get light?
Just, just for light into the, into the attic. It's not.
Not an occupied space.
And then the horizontal window is a horizontal window about five, starting five feet above the tub area to let light into the bathroom.
I see. Thank you.
Chairman?
Any other questions? Okay.
I have one. So I'm assuming these are rentals, right, and the property owner would be maintaining the surrounding space, the lawn space and everything?
Yes.
But at some point, if this converts to be a fee simple, would you agree that there would be an HOA or a management company that manages it, right?
I would presume yes, because I think the, the board and the town would feel more comfortable with an HOA in place to ensure that the grounds are properly maintained.
Correct.
So I would say yes, the applicant would consent to that.
I think that should be one of the condition of approvals.
Okay, thank you. Going back to my left, any further questions? Okay, I'll open up to the public now. Does anybody from the public have a question for this witness? See no hands, I close the public. Mr. Sodilo?
Well, is there any more witnesses?
No.
Then we just have to open up the public.
Right.
Is that what you just questioned?
Okay. We'll open it up. Any further questions for either witness?
Or, or any general comment, comments or testimony with regard to the application?
See no hands, I close that portion.
Okay, actually, if I could just clarify, because I, is this application for preliminary only or preliminary and final?
Preliminary and final.
It is preliminary, okay, because I just know, and the agenda just said preliminary, so I wanted to make sure. So, Mr. Chairman, a vote in favor of this application would be a vote for granting major preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval with the requested C variances and design waivers as been testified to this evening. The conditions, aside from the standard conditions, will be compliance with the board professional's report dated November twelfth, which has been also testified to by the applicant, as well as just, as just agreed to by Mr. Sawan's comment that if this property is converted from a rental to a fee simple ownership of the individual units, then the, then property owner agrees that they will create a homeowners association for each of the units to maintain the common areas prior to any transfer of ownership.
Okay, do we have a motion to move this forward, or?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Latwer?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
And I want to also thank your board professionals for working with us. We think this was a better redesign with the parking adjacent to the buildings and the access. And a lot of effort was put into this, but we greatly appreciate your confidence and look forward to building this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Our next application is 65-2024P Hook Mountain Associates LLC, represented by Lawrence B. Sax Esquire. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, Lawrence Sax, on behalf of the applicant, Hook Mountain. We're here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan and bulk variance approval. I know many of you, I'm sure, are all familiar with this site. This is the site of where the Hampton Inn Hotel is located, which was approved, I believe, by the zoning board back in 2012. And property is located Lot 2.11, Block 16001, and it's 300 Spring Valley Road. I have several witnesses tonight, this evening, Mr. Chairman. My first witness is going to be Mr. Mike Testa, who is our architect. He's going to, and it's unusual that I would have the architect go first, but I think it's important in this scenario, because I want to give a flavor of the board exactly what we're proposing here. This is really a modest-sized building. It is the type of building that is only going to accommodate three uses. One of them is a microbrewery, one of them is a restaurant, and then the upstairs is really going to be an event space for, as a breakout room or for rehearsal dinners and things of that nature. You'll realize that the event space is really not that large. The upstairs is only 4,000 square feet. We'll give you a breakdown by floor plan as to that. So Mr. Testa will provide that information. My second witness will be the principal of Hook Mountain, Mr. Pat Visunathan, who is the owner of this property, owner of the hotel, is here in Old Bridge every day and runs that facility. And he'll demonstrate to you why he needs to have this particular use there. If you're familiar with his hotel, there's really only a breakfast area for people to, you know, who are staying there to eat. By building this building, and hopefully the board approves it, it'll accommodate restaurant use, bar use, which really are accessory to most modern hotels. So it's something that is important to him and is lacking in this facility, so it will really accessorize what's there. My last two witnesses are Laura Ly Totten from Crest Engineering. She is our civil engineer. She'll go over the site layout. And my last witness is Mr. Scott Kennel from McDonnell Ray Associates, and he is our traffic engineer. We do need a parking variance. He'll provide testimony that we certainly can satisfy that parking variance. He's done a number of parking counts and traffic analysis. And because of the interdependence of these two uses on site, we think that it will flow very well, and Mr. Kennel will put that together. And then finally, I'm going to call Ms. Totten back, because she's also a professional planner, and I'll have her briefly just talk about the two variances that we need.
Okay. Just so you know, testimony ends at 10:00. If we get that far, in 10:30, we adjourn.
We're going to try to be very efficient, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So my first witness is Mr. Michael Testa.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Michael Testa, T-E-S-T-A. I am a registered architect of the state of New Jersey, in good standing since 1991. Graduated, I'm sorry, since 1996, graduate of NJIT School of Architecture, 1991. Principal architect and Michael V. Testa architect since 2002, and I've had the pleasure of testifying in front of this board many times before.
You're accepting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Testa, I sort of gave a little groundwork of what you're going to testify to, so if you can give the board the benefit of your architectural testimony, elevations, layout, and how everything is going to flow here, and what the particular uses are as well.
Thank you very, thank you very much. What you have in front of, in front of the board right now on the screen is two color renderings of the building. Just wanted to start the project off showing you, you know, the nature of the building, gives you a sense of the scale and the size. It's nowhere near the size of the adjacent building. It's a, it's a 9,790-square-foot building. Each floor is approximately 4,895 square feet with a 500-square-foot exterior patio that's covered. The first floor contains, as Mr. Sax had indicated, a microbrew area. It's about 1,715 square feet, and a restaurant area that's about 2,304 square feet. That also has an entrance lobby that would be direct access with an elevator to the second floor. The entire building will be fully handicap compliant. The front entrances of the building will be handicap accessible, and that includes the entrance to the second floor, which would be access to the elevator. The remaining exits around the building, by code, do not require ADA compliance. We have doors leading out for egress purposes to satisfy the code. There is a ramp at the back of the microbrewery that is purely for a service ramp, so they can wheel the ingredients for the microbrewery up and back and forth. They're not having to lift them up stairs and carry them in that way. If you would please, sir, if you can go to the floor plans, and I'll just briefly...
Before we do that, the, what we're looking at now, just for record-keeping purposes, is that something that's already been provided, was part of our packet, or is that, that color rendering, is that new that we need to market?
Well, it wasn't with your computer person to, so I'm going to say it's new.
Okay. So just for record-keeping purposes, that's going to be marked as Exhibit A, excuse me, Exhibit A1, and that is the color renderings of the side of the building?
Great, thank you. I have a little red pointer here for the screen, and I'm pointing to my left on the side here. So the top of the screen is the front elevation facing Spring Street. This side here is facing the Hampton Inn. As you can see here, we have two little, two columns with an entrance portico that would be direct access for the hotel to come into this lobby and into the elevator that would take you to the second floor. The space in the middle here is your microbrewery. We just gave a generic layout of some tables, small bar area and a dispensing area of the microbrew. And the back area here is really your production area. So you have doors here, the ramp coming in to get access into the back area for the manufacturing of the microbrew. The two small spaces here is a utility room and a sprinkler riser room. And then off to the right-hand side, this is your restaurant area that's 2,300 square feet. As you can see, 50% of it is really dining and dining area and patron area. The back of the house is food prep. You know, the area's large enough, because we're going to have to put a freezer-cooler inside the building. So even though it looks large, it's really not that large. And it will service the outdoor patio that I indicated is about 500 square feet. You have these rectangular spaces here and here. These are the two means of egress required for the second floor. And again, your entrance lobby to the second floor where we have our event space. Scroll down. Thank you, sir. Just to give you a point of reference, here's that elevator. You come out on the other side of the elevator into a lobby space. This common area consists of a multiple occupant toilet rooms for men and women. And then this is your event space. And you can see it's a little less than 50% of the floor area, which is 1,774 square feet of area. We have two bridal suites. A bridal suite one is 745 square feet. Bridal suite number two is 1,000, I'm sorry, I don't want to mess them up. The second bridal suite is 431 square feet. We have a small little prep area, staging area for the event space. They could either, they have a dumb waiter in case they want to make the food in the restaurant downstairs, send it up to serve whoever, like coffee and donuts or whatever's going on in this space as part of the event. Or they could bring in food, set up sandwiches, and then bring it out when the event takes a break. I mean, this could be like a corporate event where you have people coming in from different areas, staying at the hotel, having an event, a meeting here, serving some food, going back to the meeting, and then going back to their hotel to leave. So the second floor is very simple. We just have some storage spaces in this area, and again, your two egress stairs out of the second floor. We go back to the color renderings. I'll do that instead of the building elevations. And as you can see, this is the, oops, sorry. The elevation on the left is the front facade facing Spring Street. It's a two-story building, as we indicated, fully sprinkled, non-combustible building. So the height of the building to the top of the roof itself, the roof surface, is 37 feet 10 inches, plus or minus. You have a standard parapet that's in the middle that's consistent on all four sides. That standard parapet is 39 feet. And then these tower elements are 42 feet 6 inches above grade at these points. Again, the architecture is very similar, almost identical, to the adjacent building, trying to tie the two buildings architecturally. The use of the different windows gives it a little more of a modern flair, but still in keeping with the architecture of the adjacent building. All the rooftop equipment will be screened and not visible from ground, and everything will drain into the underground system designed by Ms. Totten in Crest Engineering. And that would conclude my presentation.
All right. Mr. Testa, just a couple of questions. And Mr. Holahan, if you can go back to the second floor, floor plan, just for a second. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Testa, the event space that we're talking about would be to the top of the screen?
The space right here.
And that's roughly 1,700 square feet?
Yes, sir. 1,715.
Now, we've labeled two bridal suites there.
This one here?
Right.
And this one here.
All right. And those could also be utilized as day rooms as well for meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And in terms of weddings, I mean, I don't think we're going to be performing any weddings in a 1,700-square-foot area, but certainly if there is a wedding party staying at the hotel, they would have use of that bridal suite. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in that event space of 1,700 square foot, if we needed to put partitions in there to break it down, is that a possibility as well?
We could split it this way. We just need access to the toilet rooms, but yes, it could be subdivided to make that work.
All right. Mr. Testa, anything else you want to add?
Other than the ADA access and complacency, I think that concludes my testimony.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Mr. Testa. Certainly is available for questioning now.
Thank you. Veena, go ahead.
So I'm a little confused. The event space is solely for the guests of the hotel, right?
I mean, it could be rented out to the public if they needed to have space, if they wanted to have some...
That's the clarification I wanted, because you're asking for a parking variance. If this space is going to be open to public, then that should be included in the parking calculations as well. So the parking variance that you're asking for would be much higher than what it is shown in this, or shown on your plans or in this memo, because I remember when I met with Pat almost two, two and a half years ago, that was one of the concerns that I had, that is this going to be pad sites? Are these going to be open to general public? And my understanding was that it was an accessory building that was solely meant for the hotel. But when I see brewery, I see a restaurant, I see a different use that has come in. And I just wanted to remind the board, EDO3, or our ordinance, allows multiple non-residential uses on a site. But I just want to understand how it impacts the traffic. And also, I was thinking as, this is one project with an accessory building added, but it changes the flavor of it.
Let me respond. All right. It will, and maybe I spoke out of turn. I don't honestly think this will be utilized by the general public. It's a 1,700-square-foot area, which is probably half the size of this room. So I don't perceive that the general public will be utilizing it. It will be utilized by guests of the hotel, organizations that may be staying at the hotel. In terms of the restaurant and microbrewery, again, yes, there could be somebody from the general public who could come to this site, but we have, obviously, our traffic engineer who'll testify as to the parking counts that were performed. But again, I would anticipate that most of the patrons who are going to this microbrewery or to the restaurant would be patrons of the hotel. Right now, we don't have any of those facilities within the hotel, and I think as all board members can recognize, most hotels do have separate restaurants, do have a bar, for lack of a better term, and they are somewhat modest-sized as well. But I'm going to have Mr. Visunathan testify as to what these potential uses would be.
So first, in terms of the second-floor space, right, would you guys, would the applicant be... Would you guys, would the applicant be, uh, would, would you agree that as a condition of approval, it would be restricted to the hotel use? And I say that only because you're asking for a parking variance, right?
Yes.
And then the other thing, and I understand, Mike, what you were trying to do in terms of architecture, but when I look at it, it looks like an excessive rebuilding to the hotel. How would you market the brewery or the restaurant? The, the base of it is not a typical restaurant type of architecture. I would, i- if it's a brewery, I would want to see more glass and more openness. So that's why I got a little confused as to, you know, what exactly is the purpose? And if it is truly, I, I would let the board decide whether they, how they pursue the restaurant, but I would see, I would want to see something different architecturally on the ground floor at least if it's going to be retail, like restaurant uses.
Okay. So to answer the first question about limitation to the general public, we would agree to that. It will be, it'll be utilized by hotel guests only. Um, and Mr. Tester, as to any other architectural treatments that we could, uh, employ based on Ms. Sawant's comment, could we do that?
Yeah, and we've, we've worked in, with you in the past for the architecture of the building on other projects and that's something we'd be willing to do to satisfy the...
And I do understand what you were trying to achieve. Like, uh, you wanted the building to look as a continuation of the hotel. I get it. But if you're trying to propose a restaurant, A, you're disadvantaged to some extent because it's not a typical pad site where you have a, access from the highway. So you're coming from, uh, Spring Valley, but at the same time, I would want to see a different architectural style then so that a passerby, unless the restaurant is very famous and it becomes like a destination place, um, you would want at least, uh, it to have an inviting, uh, facade and openness.
Mr. Chairman, we'll work with your staff as to the architectural treatments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Darcy?
I think Vina covered it.
Okay. Mr. DePalma?
I'm the only one to the right.
I know.
Uh, so, looking at the architect, um, where is the signage for the proposed brew pub? Cause I don't see it represented.
We don't have signage indicated on the building. It's, whatever signage we do install will be in accordance with the signage ordinance. It'll be over each of the entrances to the individual spaces. You have the restaurant, you have the, um, microbrew, and then you have an entrance lobby to the second floor event space.
Okay. No, cause typically when, when we're reviewing the architectures, there's always at least some representation of the signage. And I don't see it. And is, are there, I guess that's for the site plan, just wondering if there's gonna be additional signage out, um, on Spring Valley as well for...
There is a, there is a free standing sign that is being...
Yeah, and I'll have my engineer testify to that.
We could add signage to the facade when we modify it based on Venus.
Yeah, it could just, um, yeah, we typically at least have some level of representation to see what it looks like to make sure that it fits the surrounding, um, developments. And the brew pub itself, um, that's, that's our general public, right? It's, it's gonna be open to the public. So I, I would say what with Vina, I would think we need to look at the parking variance because I think when you hear brew pub, I think it gets, things like that could potentially get extremely crowded. And that, that parking lot is not huge to begin with. I've been to a number of events where we have an HOA meetings or stuff like that where it fills up. I think we have to look at what the, the parking potential could be.
Mr. Chairman, I do, I do have a question. There was a comment in our memo regarding liquor license and everything. Would the applicant be the one testifying to that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Any questions to my left?
Be on Spring Valley Road where the hotel is?
The entranceway to the drive-out entranceway or the building? The drive-out entranceway will stay the same. I'll let the, uh, site engineer testify to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Ed, go ahead.
On the second floor space, that will be, uh, a space that will be for, as you said, uh, area of meetings and things of that nature. So the, uh, is that considered, um, unconcentrated, um, load area with tables and chairs?
Loose table, loose tables and chairs, yeah.
So we figure in it's about, what, hundred, hundred people, hundred fifteen people?
Typically, it's divided by fifteen square feet for loose tables and chairs.
So it's about, it's about a hundred sixteen people then?
Potentially. But this, again, we're, we're setting this up as far as a, um, a breakout area. I don't know if we're, we're not having weddings where we're packing tables of ten in there. It's gonna be more of roast seating where somebody would be displaying and having discussion with the dais up front. That's the intention of the space. But they could have tables in there where we are, sitting round table discussions with your team members. It, it's a multi-purpose space that could be used and, but yes, you're correct. It is unconcentrated and the calculation is fifteen, uh, square feet per, for, per area. So you take that area divided by fifteen, that'd give you your maximum occupancy load. And that's how we designed the bathroom facilities on the second floor. It looks like we have multiple ba- toilets, a lot of bathrooms, but it would satisfy all the people that would be on that second floor.
I see. Okay. And the, uh, restaurant area on the first floor, would that be expected to be used by the bar, uh, the brewery also?
They're two separate entities, so it's two separate businesses.
But there is a possibility that the brewery would facilitate some people in the restaurant also? You could bring some beer into that space?
Well, the, no, they are two separate uses. So I'm assuming the, the bar may serve some bar food, the restaurant will be more of a restaurant.
So it's two separate entities and they, you want it to mingle, uh, alcohol into the, into that restaurant?
Unless they get a liquor license, but, uh, they would have to have their own liquor license for that.
But you don't have someone for that space at this point?
We have no tenants for either space at the, at this point in time. Obviously, you know, that's something that will happen after the fact.
Oh, I, I thought that the microbrewery was a, was an intended space, so it's, it may not be a brewery then.
It potentially could be a bar, uh, but right now, we don't have any particular tenants. It may also be operated by Mr. Viswanathan, who is, you know, the owner of the property. I'm gonna have him testify as to that.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question? Okay. I'll open it up to the public now. Anyone from the public like to question this witness? Seeing no hands, I'll close the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my next witness will be, uh, Mr. Viswanathan, who is the owner of the property.
Yes, thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Can please state your name and spell it for the record.
Viswanathan, V I S W A N A T H A N. First name is Pat.
All right. Mr. Viswanathan, if you can, uh, confirm a couple of things for me. First of all, you are the owner of this property, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you actually built the hotel?
Yes, I did.
And you received an approval from the zoning board back in 2012?
And planning board.
And planning board, okay. All right. Um, if you can give the board a little flavor of what's on the site right now in terms of the hotel, how many rooms are there, uh, what other amenities are in the hotel?
The hotel is Hampton Inn by Hilton. It's about a hundred rooms right now and, um, it's been in operation for the past three years. And, um, thanks to the board, thanks to the council people, um, the, the ratables on this property is extremely high and great amount of revenue coming to the township because of this project. Now, um, as far as this property is concerned, this is strictly a hundred-room property. There is no restaurant in the hotel. We have a breakfast area that we accommodate for free breakfast for the, for the guest that stays in the hotel. And, uh, we have no conference room. Uh, we have no, um, boardroom to speak of. What we did is we converted this, w- one room and used that as, as people that wants to come and do some meetings and, you know, get togethers and, uh, after, you know, after the, the event, they wanna get together in that room. Or if they want some food, they can get some food. Um, we have, uh, tons of people that, uh, we did last year, in the last couple of years, we, we did about forty weddings in the hotel. The parties, uh, the wedding parties, but they never had a wedding in the hotel, but they go to Marquee or some other, they do, uh, but they stay at the hotel. Bar mitzvahs, we probably did about twenty, twenty-five bar mitzvahs. Birthday parties, um, sporting events. Um, uh, for example, last weekend, we had, uh, thirty kids doing sports events. So we do a lot of sport events almost every week. We, um, weekends, uh, we do a lot of sporting events. And, um, those days we are full and a lot of kids running around at the hotel. They have no place to hang out and they have no place to have beers. And parents complain that, hey, you know, we got a beautiful place, but we got no place to congregate. The kids can't hang out and, so we need a place. We gotta go outside to drink and we don't like people drinking outside. So it's about time that I find a place to build for accommodate those kind of events. I don't see, I know I'm, I'm jumping the gun here. I don't see this event space that, that we are proposing is gonna be used by public. The reason is, we are so busy with, within our own needs, that we need a space for these people to congregate. And that is the main reason I wanna build this. If I have to, um, uh, say that I'm not gonna have outside people, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, yeah. I mean, cause that's, that's, uh, obviously a suggestion made by the professional staff. So you will commit that the, uh, the second floor of this, uh, facility that's being proposed will only be utilized by your hotel guests?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have, uh, I, I'll be full.
All right. All right. And you said before that you have wedding parties, bar mitzvah parties, sporting events. You don't have the events occurring at the hotel. These are people staying here.
Exactly.
And then traveling to a catering facility off-site.
Right.
A synagogue off-site.
Right.
Uh, or a sporting event off-site. Okay.
And not, not only that, I can talk about, we did about, um, last year alone, forty funerals. Uh, people come down for funerals and they stay at the hotel, ten, fifteen people. Church events, they come and stay at the hotel. Right? They, they all wanna get together after their, their event and they wanna have a place to eat. They wanna have, get pizza from outside. They wanna get beer from outside. Although we have a liquor license, lately, we just got it a couple of months ago and they buy the beer from us or they can bring it from outside and drink it.
All right. So you do have a liquor license? That was a question, I think, Mr. Darcy had.
Yes, we do have a full, we do have a full, full liquor license. We're entitled to get it, full liquor.
I know, you're familiar testimony. My question was really regarding the fact that you have two separate facilities. Is the, the one liquor license cover both facilities? Had, and I know there are special micro, the brewery licenses and all that, so that's kinda what the testimony I, I was hoping to listen to.
Right. Brew pub needs a separate license from the state of New Jersey.
Right.
But as far as the C license that I have, that I could use it in the hotel.
Restaurant.
As far as, and the people wants to have it in the restaurant or up in the event space, they can bring their own, they could drink it. I'm allowed to do that as far as I'm concerned. Jason Mandier is my consultant for the liquor license. That's what he told me. As far as a brew, uh, brew pub license, it's a separate license, nothing to do with, uh, with the local body, but it's gotta be, uh, done through state of New Jersey.
All right. Let me ask you a few more questions about the second floor now. Um, there is no kitchen up there, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. So anybody who is gonna be utilizing that space will have to bring their own food in, correct?
Correct. Or cater it from outside.
Or cater it from outside. All right. Um, this is not gonna be a banquet facility upstairs?
Absolutely not.
All right. And...
This is not big enough to have a banquet or conference center. It's a conference center that, that I see there is, is...
All right. It's a seventeen hundred square foot area that's gonna be utilized. All right. And in terms of the labeling of a bridal suite, you stated that you do do a lot of wedding, uh, stayovers in your hotel.
Exactly.
All right. Let, let, well, let me ask you the question, Pat. So essentially then, the bridal suite that you're proposing, or the two bridal suites, uh, would be utilized by a wedding party who would then have their wedding off-site?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. What, may I embellish on that a little bit?
Sure.
What happens is, we do, like I said, thirty, forty weddings a year and, um, they wanna have a bridal suite. We don't have a bridal suite at the hotel. The hotel is just a hotel. It's a limited service hotel by Hilton. Um, they wanted to buy a bridal suite, so we, I figured this is probably the best idea to put the bridal suite there. If they wanna use it, they're welcome to use it.
All right. And in terms of your present operations at the hotel with deliveries, um, can you give the board the, some testimony as to what type of deliveries you get, uh, how often they occur? Let's talk about food. How often does that get delivered to the hotel?
Well, food gets delivered once a week, every, every Thursday. Uh, they usually, it's usually Cisco Food is our supplier, US Food, uh, those are the two suppliers. They usually come, uh, somewhere about four to five o'clock in the morning and they deliver it right to the kitchen area and, and they're gone. They, they're usually a box truck deliveries and, um, that's, that's the only food, once a week is the food delivery. And then we have guest supplies, our, um, room supplies like linens and shampoo and, and soaps. They do, uh, twice a month.
Okay. And how about trash? How often is trash picked up?
Trash, uh, waste management comes and picks it up, uh, twice, uh, twice a week, six yards, a container in a separate enclosure we have. And they come around four, five o'clock in the morning, uh, twice a week.
All right. Now, for the new proposed building, what type of deliveries will you have?
We'll probably have, uh, pretty much the same. I would say, uh, Cisco or some other vendor, um, probably once a week and, um, deliver the food, um, I'm hoping. And then the trash, I would say the waste manager will probably do the same trash.
Okay. And you'll have a separate container on that property?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of this witness. Certainly he's available for any...
Okay, thank you. To my right, uh...
The only question I have is, Pat, the liquor license that you have, it wouldn't be, the lower level wouldn't be utilizing that. You would just be using the consumption part. Should folks wanna utilize the second floor?
Exactly.
Any, any bar and/or restaurant, brew pub or anything would be...
Independent. They gotta get their own.
Separate and distinct and independent from, from the hotel itself.
Correct. Correct. For two reasons, liability also.
Okay. And the, the only other thing that I, I was talking with Vina about, and it doesn't seem, cause I don't know if hindering you or any business from bringing in an outside, you know, entity to utilize that space, but if there's a way to find the parking to utilize that space, I don't know if anyone up here would have issue with, like, for instance, All American Ford wanting to utilize it for a larger, you know, space like that, they, because they don't have it for whatever reason. So I just wanna see if we can look, I guess when the, when we look at the site plans, we could talk to see if there is additional space for parking, because if we can get the parking, I don't think that we should hinder you from allowing an outside, you know, group come in or a company that wants to just have a one-day off-site, right? Especially, you know, there's a fair number of financial services firm up and down Route Nine that may not have the conference space for independent reps or whatever that are, a lot of people are working remotely and not necessarily in office. A lot of offices have downsides.
May I embellish on that for a minute? I have many companies, for example, Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A comes to me and says, hey, you know what? I, I have twenty people that I'm training and I need a space.[1705.65] Can you give me, I, I'm going to have all these twenty people come and stay at your hotel. And I need a space for, for us to train these guys. I need, I need the space for one week. Can you provide? Right now, I couldn't. What I do is, I combine two rooms together and accommodate them. This way, I, I don't lose business. Those kind of opportunities, I don't want to miss if I could, uh, if it's possible. And, uh, these are corporate clients and, uh, just like Ford. Ford wanted to come and do their interviews and, and training. So, uh, if I could accommodate them, I would. But it's not, that's not what I call as a public. I can't have somebody come there and say, say, you know, I want to use this room for, for bar mitzvah, a hundred people, two hundred people. That's what I would restrict because I cannot accommodate that. I don't have a parking space.
Okay.
But if, when a corporate entity comes to me and says, I'm going to give you ten rooms. I'm going, they're going to stay there for a week. I need space for them to train. Can you provide that? I have to accommodate that.
Okay.
Because they are staying at the hotel.
Okay.
Anybody to my left have a question for Mr. Nathan, the owner?
Not so much a question, but just to elaborate on what Mr. DePomme said. Um, I've noticed over the last couple of years, a lot of companies, you know, or, or applicants come to the board and say, I have a small space. I have nine employees and, you know, five work remotely. So, they don't need a large building. So, that's, you know, they're, they're able to, uh, get their buildings, uh, built and complete in Old Bridge. But now, if they do have to have a meeting where everybody comes together, a room like this would actually work for them. So, you know, like, uh, Mr. DePomme's point, if we could make it work for everybody where the applicant could have this room that's utilized for that use, I don't, I wouldn't want to restrict them on it either. I think that would, that would, yeah, we have to make sure that the parking works.
And, and you know, you're going to, our, our expert, our traffic expert will testify, you know, he'll, he did actual, obviously, the one benefit we have is the hotel has been in existence for a long time. So, we, he did counts during the weekend, during the weekday, and so, we have a good accurate picture on that, so.
You know, that's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Nathan?
I, I think the parking is going to be, uh, vital over here because you are going to have a microbrewery that is going to bring outside people in. You are going to have a restaurant that's going to bring outside people in. You know, and the traffic is going to be, it's not just minimal. You're going to have traffic all over the place on, uh, Spring Valley Road. As far as the upper, I have no issues with that. It's just the microbrewery is going to bring a lot of people into that place. So, if microbrewery and the restaurant is going to be hopping, you're going to need the parking spot. You know, I think that's, that's what I'm looking at right now. Upstairs, I have no issues.
Yeah, uh.
Go ahead.
You mentioned you have a Group C liquor license?
I think so.
And that is what, a bring your own?
No, uh, I, I, maybe my, uh.
C license.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a C license.
C license.
It, that, that means I could, I could sell, I could serve, or they could bring their own. And that, I think that's.
So, that covers?
It's a broad.
All of that.
Covers everything, okay. I was just unclear about that when you said they can bring their own. Usually, that's all.
Yeah.
Like, bring your own and then that's it.
Right.
But you have a triple.
The difference is, they can bring their own, but they can, if I don't have that, that license, they can bring their own. Nobody can stop anybody from bringing a, uh, six-pack of beer into the hotel. They could go to the room and drink it, but I wouldn't let them drink it in the hallway. I wouldn't let them drink it in the public space of the hotel. Simply because it's a liability issue and also violation of the ABC rules. So, now that I have that license, they can bring, I can sell, they can drink in the public area as long as they're not being belligerent about it. Um, so, my license covers all of that right now.
Okay, yeah, and then, that would be two more liquor licenses going into that property?
In addition to what I have, yes.
Separate from you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Petty?
Have, we don't, you don't have a tenant yet though, correct? For either space?
Correct.
Have you?
I have lots of inquiries. Um, some, they want me to put the brewery equipment. They want to rent it or lease it. Some, they want it to bring their own and bring their own brewmaster and brew it. I have lots of inquiries for it. And on the restaurant side, I have lot, lots of inquiries for barbecue.
Okay.
So, uh, they, they all think that the brew and the barbecue would go hand in glove. So, that's where I am at this point.
I think it's a good idea. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I'm glad to hear things are really going well.
Thank you.
And, um, I just think, like, a lot of it's going to depend on the parking, how you're going to make that all work. Um, but I think, you know, it, it certainly has merit and serves, would serve a need, you know? Expand your, um.
If I might take a minute of your time, I just wanted to let you know, before this project got on board, I was paying thirty thousand dollars for that empty lot. Today, I'm paying over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on, on that property, real estate tax. In terms of occupancy tax, I am paying over three hundred thousand dollars a year. Three hundred thousand dollars a year in occupancy tax. Okay? Sales tax, okay, six and, six point seven five percent. Close to two hundred thousand dollars of sales tax. City gets part of that. Occupancy tax, city gets five percent. Township gets five percent. And then, the other four percent or whatever is shared by the state and the city. Ton of money coming into the, into the city because of this project. Thanks to the board and, and the council and the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ed, did you have a question? Oh, Vina?
Chairman, um, I think we should hold off from committing to not opening the conference space because I think I have a solution. I'll hold off.
I have to hear it.
Yeah, I, I, I want to hold off for your engineer, but I think there is a solution to it.
Thank you.
So, let's, uh.
I know you have an idea.
Okay, uh, okay, we're done over here?
Yes.
Any, we'll open up to the public for any questions for the owner? Go ahead.
I'm in support of.
Can you get a microphone?
No, I need it.
Name is Kiran Desai, resident of this township from forty-five years. As you all know, that this township, this is the first hotel we have. We never even had a regular motel. This is a Hilton brand motel. And you all travel as well as I. And we stayed in a facility outside, day or two day or three day. And we'd like to eat in the same place in lunch and dinner. I have never seen any hotel without the food establishment. So, by bringing this food establishment next to the hotel, this will bring more business to the township. More small company will come and their representative will stay at the hotel and go to the restaurant for a food and at the bar for a drink. One other thing I would say, this will also bring some jobs for the local people. Because food establishment need the people to serve the food, cook the food, clean the facility. And bar also need. So, I personally request to all of you, look the benefit what we are getting. It's not detrimental because this facility in kind of a triangle. On one side is major highway, Route Eighteen. Other side is a small road, Spring Hill, and big Ford dealership. And one side is Route Nine. So, there is no detrimental to the neighborhood. So, when you look the benefits coming out from this facility, I think it has the right to get approval. I personally request all of you. I saw the comment from Ms. Avan, our planner, about traffic.
Mr. Desai, could I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
At this point, uh, you can hold your comments to the, to the end, but right now, we just would like questions of the, of the.
No, I just wanted to just make a comment. I have no question because I am here everything and I'm satisfied with this.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But she's not my uncle.
Uh, is anyone else from the public would like to ask a question, like Jeopardy questions? See, no hands, I closed that portion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have, uh, I'll bring up my engineer now, Ms. Lorelei Totten. Ten o'clock, right?
Hi, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, Lorelei Totten, L-O-R-A-L-I-T as in Tom, O-T-T-E-N. Crest Engineering Association, Millstone Township, New Jersey. I am a principal there. Uh, been working there for thirty-one or two years. Graduated from Lehigh University in nineteen seventy-seven. Um, my PE license from nineteen eighty-three and is still in good standing. My professional engineer, uh, sorry, planning license, nineteen eighty-six, and it is in good standing. And I have appeared before this board before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That, thank you, Ms. Totten. Um, so, Ms. Totten, if you could give the board an overview of what's being proposed from a site, uh, improvement standpoint with respect to this proposed building?
Yes. Just get my notes out quickly. I too have a laser. And I would go to my left, your right. Um, so, we have two exhibits to mark into evidence. Uh, this first exhibit is entitled, uh, Aerial Display. It, I can't see the date from here, but it's probably today or yesterday. The date's down in the lower right-hand corner. Yeah, there, I still can't read it, sorry. It's part of being seventy.
November eleventh, it looks.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, actually, my thunder has been stolen. I just want to do this, okay? So, as you can see, the site is outlined in yellow. Route Eighteen is to the rear of the property. There is a contractor's yard in this location to the right of the property. The Spring Valley Road is of, of, obviously, the access point to the top or north of the property. And surrounding it, as was already noted, is the American Ford car dealerships. Uh, and then, Nine, of course, is off to the left side of the property. Um, and you can see the existing hotel with its parking, detention basins. I'd like to point out that this area in the middle right here is, um, was a wetland. There was a permit obtained to fill it. It has been filled already. Um, a tree removal permit was obtained, I believe, in around two thousand and ten because we assisted with that process. There is a, um, conservation easement around this tree area right here uh, to the right of the property, which is to be conserved. And, um, I, I believe the request was to put some signs around it since now it'll be closer to a usable part of the site. Uh, so, we would be pleased to do that. So, that gives you an idea of what this looks like, although I'm sure you all know anyway. And maybe we can go on to the next exhibit? Thank you very much. Okay, this. This next exhibit is a rendering of the landscape plan. And it is also dated November eleventh of this year.
Now, just, just for record, I, I don't think I said it, that this, the first exhibit will be marked as, uh, Exhibit A two and this will be Exhibit A three.
I hope it's going to come up.
I'm counting on Mr. Holahan. I think he'll get it.
We saw it. In any event, the, um, project is, uh, the building as described by the architect. Uh, nine thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet on two floors. It is located adjacent to the parking area that extended off to the left of the existing hotel. Backs up to that. Um, a couple of those spaces are being utilized for deliveries. Ah, here we are, perfect. Okay, uh, so, as I was saying, the proposed facility is located off the extension of the parking lot to the south of the main facility. And this demonstrates really that it is a relatively small compared to the hotel itself. Um, and then, in front of it, to the north of it, is the parking lot. There is a connection proposed in between the two parking lots. Uh, uh, in this location, to the north of the new parking lot, plus a new access off of, uh, Spring Valley Road with an in and an out. Um, we have a hundred and sixty parking spaces proposed with eight of them being EV. And I forget how many handicap spaces, I'm sorry. Uh, but adequate number of handicap spaces with an aisle coming down to the main entrance. There's sidewalks around the facility. There's, as was testified to before, there is an area for a patio that is, uh, surrounded by landscaping, uh, as well. And there is access to those various different service doors at the rear of the site. Um, as was noted, one of the doors seems to go out to the shrubbery. That will be corrected should you grant approval. There is an access from the hotel, as was, uh, mentioned, under a, a covered entrance in the location on the west side. And it was suggested that we add a crosswalk over to the hotel in this area to, uh, keep people safe. And that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, let's see, what else can I tell you about the layout? Well, it's a circular layout. These white lines that you see here are the fire lines. And of course, we will go to the fire department, um, to get their approval and adjust any of the fire lines as they see fit, providing adequate signage as well. Uh, with, with regard to the layout, there were a few comments in the engineering review about additional signs and so on. And we would propose to work with the engineer to come up with the best possible solution to the signage. Um, there is one spot located near the entrance that if you were coming from the new facility into the old facility, you would not be able to get into that unless you went past it and backed in or went around and came back. But that's one spot, and we don't think that that is a detriment to this layout. Uh, we, we do have a couple of places where we have less than five-foot radii. There, most of these, I believe, we can make a little bit larger. The one that's up by this parking space, I don't believe we can due to keeping the driveway access outside of the turnaround area. So, we would request a design waiver from that particular area. Uh, it's a four-foot radius. Um, there are some other comments about the layout that I think are cleanup comments. And I would be, like I said, very happy to work with your engineering and planning staff to work them out. Um, so, with regard to the, let's see, what else would I like to tell you? Obviously, there is existing water and sewer. There's a sewer line in easement that runs across the front of the property. There's water connections, the hotel has them, uh, water line out in the area. So, we're proposing to connect to the sewer line with a lateral. And the water line goes off in this direction, uh, to get to its connection. And of course, there's also electrical connections and, uh, telecommunications. And all of those are available. Uh, there, I, there's no floodplains on this site. I talked about the wetlands already. Um, let's see, just making sure I hit all the hotspots here. There was not proposed to have a new dumpster. There is an existing dumpster enclosure facility, as was testified to by the owner. The, uh, method of the trash truck getting there is not going to change. It works now and it will continue to work. And, uh, if for some reason, the trash and recycling's a little bit higher because of the additional facility, then there's always a possibility of having it picked up more frequently. Since it's only picked up twice a week now, another pickup could be provided that would adequately address this facility, uh, proposed facility. Um, let's see, okay, there were, with regard to lighting, which this plan doesn't show, but the area of, uh, your ordinance requires a minimum of point one foot candles? Sorry, one point zero foot candles. The low area is along the, uh, part that is adjacent to the facility. We did not take into account in our new design. Our new design only shows the new lights. So, there are some fixtures located along the existing edge. And we believe that those fixtures, in conjunction with what we're proposing, will provide adequate light in this area along the edge adjacent to the hotel where the new lights only provide, uh, less than one point zero. And in one spot right in this location, it's down to point four. But there's an existing light that's going to be located in that same area. So, I believe that we will have adequate light.
So, we, we will not need a design waiver then for the lighting?
I, I, no, because when you add in the existing. No, because when you add in the existing light to the proposed light, I think the minimum will be met. With regard to landscaping, as you can see from our nice colored rendering, we have red and green trees. Isn't that nice? No, they represent different varieties and types of trees. Green, there's probably some evergreens in here, shrubs along the edge of the building, and so on. And it was reviewed by your conservation office, sir, who had no comments with regard to the landscaping. Your board consultant had some suggestions with regard to not location or anything, but maybe some different species in a couple of locations. We would be very happy to work with your board landscape architect to come up with a plan that's acceptable as part of resolution approval should you grant approval for this project. So, I know that a lot of tra... Oh, I didn't talk about stormwater. Ooh, sorry.
I was gonna tell you that we need to talk about stormwater.
Do you mind going? I think it's Sheet 4 of the plan set. That would be fabulous. So, while he's bringing up the plan, the stormwater management is totally independent... Excuse me. Of the stormwater management that was approved for the facility. So, there are... There is a line right here that demarks two types of porous pavement. It just has to do with the depth, but almost this entire area is going to be porous pavement, which will allow the water to fall down through the pavement, providing water quality for the project. There is a little bit of regular standard pavement in this area in the entrance drive, which we can't get into, this porous pavement area and the storage, stone storage below it. So, we have a trench drain across the entrance, and it goes to a... It is a green water quality structure because it entails the use of soil. It's called an aquaponic, and it is connected in this area, and then it will tie into this proposed stormwater. The proposed stormwater system altogether connects into an existing storm sewer located across the front of the property that services the property itself at a manhole in this location. So, we're providing water quality via all the porous pavement and the aquaponics. We're providing... So, that's quality. Number two is quantity. We have storage within the stone below with outlet structures that control that to reduce the peak rates of runoff to 50% for the two-year, 75% for the 10-year, and 80% of existing for the... Sorry, 100-year, both for the current rainfalls and for the future rainfalls that are required by the NJDEP. With regard to groundwater recharge, which there... This site, we did six test pits throughout the area of the pervious pavement, and the permeability was very low for the soils. Classified it as D soils, which are not that permeable, and therefore, under existing conditions, do not infiltrate much water. And according to the groundwater, the stormwater management rules, we don't need to provide groundwater recharge. So, although, I do have to say, the opportunity is there because it's a stone system that's going to be with filter fabric that is permeable underneath it, so if it can infiltrate, it will. So, that's basically... Oh, and the fourth item is to the requirements besides the green aspect, which is the pervious pavement, is soil erosion sediment control, and it is designed to meet the soil... Meet the soil erosion sediment control standards, along with a couple of other permits that I'll go over very briefly. We would submit for all of these should you grant approval for this particular project. Which brings me to, I believe, the other approvals. So, Middlesex County Planning Board, Old Bridge MUA, soil erosion sediment control, and the fire department approval are all required, and we would submit and work with those agencies for those approvals. One that was mentioned is the NJDOT, and I believe that Mr. Kennel will be able to back me up on this. The back of the property, back here, does a butt, the Route 18 right-of-way. However, it's a no-access point, so I don't... We do not need a DOT permit for this. This property fronts on a local street. And I think I covered all my points.
All right. Let me... Just a couple of things in the review letter from Mr. Darji dated November 12th. Let me just go over a few things here. One of the comments is extending the sidewalk to the property line. Can you show on the plan where that would be? And I'll defer to the board on that one, Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Darji.
So, we don't go quite to the property line on either end, and we designed this plan a while ago. I don't remember the reasons why. If we can extend it to the property line, we will. If there's some physical constraint, I would like to discuss that with your board, but if possible, we would extend it to the ends.
That's acceptable to me, Mr. Chairman, that we would work with the applicant, and if it's physically possible to extend the sidewalk, that's what we would want to do.
Okay. All right. And one of the comments also is about the rear door, that a side... Concrete sidewalk should be extended to include a walkway for the exit there.
Yes, that's correct. Somehow, we missed providing a concrete pad for the exit on the door that's in the location on the... I guess that's the back eastern side of the building.
Okay.
So, we would have to relocate those shrubberies and put a little sidewalk there.
All right. And there's a recommendation that fencing be provided atop the retaining wall as the height of the wall is four feet in certain places. We can comply with that?
Yes.
Okay. I think you may have covered everything else. I know Mr. Viswanathan is probably gonna tell me why we can or cannot extend the sidewalk. Just give me one second. Well, I just got the answer to the sidewalk issue that we may have to address with Mr. Darji. There should... There may be some DEP constraints with extending it out that far, but we'll work with you on that.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Totten, I don't think I have anything else of you. Certainly, the board may have some questions, and I will call you up at the conclusion to just give me five minutes of planning testimony. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to our professionals, Mr. Darji.
I do have one quick question, just a clarification. On the plan, you have along Spring Valley Road, it says new property line reference. Is that a dedication from the past application?
Yes.
So, there's no...
That was never made.
Okay, so you're doing that as part of this application, then?
Yes.
The dedication? Okay. So, as part of the... Again, should the board act favorably, we would have to have the meets and bounds descriptions and everything for the railway dedication submitted for review.
I recollect talking about the roadway dedication when we had a pre-application meeting, almost.
Okay.
Okay. My colleagues just need a copy of the deed.
And then we can just label it that way on the plan.
So, here's what I was thinking, since the parking variance is being sought, and actually, now that I look at it, the parking variance is quite significant. But one thought I had was the 11 parking spaces that you have along Spring Valley Road, right? The new proposed, probably what you can do is tandem parking spaces for employees right in the front, right? And there is... I asked Rakesh to check the grading. It slopes down. Probably, you'll need a retaining wall in this area.
Is that where you're discussing? Right there?
Can you go to the site plan?
Yeah, you're right here. You're right.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
So, you have 11 spaces there if you do tandem, so you get another 11, and then that could be designated for employees. You don't even have to pave it, but just have... You would pave it? Okay. And just have those additional spaces so that the employees park, and those 11 spaces then open up to the general public.
Okay.
That comes to the...
We'll do that, and we'll provide some type of revised plan, you know, to...
Yeah, that'll be part of compliance.
Compliance, yeah.
All right, great.
I did forget to mention that there is a... We will need a slope variant... Not a variant, it's a slope waiver, because currently, when this facility was constructed, the hotel, it slopes down at a normal slope of like four to one, but that's 20%. And the slope along here is all man-made slopes, which is what... And then there's slopes in the detention basin. So, that's what our report had referred to. So, I guess technically, we do need... We would request a design waiver for disturbing those man-made slopes along the edge, but I believe that the benefits definitely outweigh the detriments of granting that waiver from those.
Yeah. The intention, usually, just for the board's dedication, the intention for having that requirement is so that it's really a stability concern. When you disturb steep slopes, it's hard to stabilize them. In this particular case, we're talking about a steep slope that's gonna be basically filled in, so stability's not even a concern here. So, I would have no objection to that waiver.
Are you finished?
I am.
Nina? Nina? Mr. DePalmer, to my right?
Yeah. So, I guess my question would be, why isn't the... I thought originally, when there were some conversations around it, this was gonna be attached to the hotel. Why isn't it attached to the hotel, or at least attached somehow to the overhang that goes between the hotel and like the parking, the front parking area?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm just the engineer. That was a decision that was made by...
But it's not a site-specific reason why it...
It keeps from disturbing the existing parking.
Yeah, that... I think that's really the reason, because we're not disturbing any of the approved parking that was there when the hotel was approved. So, if we... I guess if we were to attach it, you know, we would probably lose some spots, but I'm sure that's the reason why.
It also makes it easier to construct while keeping the hotel in operation.
Yeah, I think... In fact, I think there was a comment, will the hotel be closed there? No, the hotel will remain open during construction. There won't be any need to close it, and there won't be any need to impact on the parking field, so.
Okay. And would Nina's suggestion of the tandem parking for the employees, would that trigger any issues with that, the front portion of the property? Any setbacks? Maybe that's a question for you guys. A buffer.
I did check. I don't think there is a buffer requirement. I just feel the landscaping would be pushed back slightly.
Would be pushed closer to Spring Valley?
Closer to the spring, yeah. But I think when you come back for compliance plan, you should work with Rakesh and me with the landscaping as well as in that front portion.
We need to stay out of the construction easement.
I don't believe a variance is required.
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. We do need to make sure we stay out of the sanitary sewer easement.
Yes.
Which is on an angle to the parking, so it would only be close on the right side or the east side.
Yeah.
You may not get all 11, but I think you can get at least 10.
Okay, Mr. DePalmer, you finished?
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Okay. Let's go to my left. Okay, Mr. Mike Isaac?
Yes. With the lighting, I don't know if you go back to that aerial view, Danny. You mentioned the lighting was on the front corner of where the existing property was. What lighting is in the new parking lot?
I didn't say how many poles.
There are some in there, though, right?
There are.
I thought you were just pointing out.
The lighting plan is...
Danny, you have that on the... Maybe Danny can pull it up.
Yeah.
Obviously, there is new lighting proposed in that parking field.
Because my concern is back on the wood line.
It's LED lighting, which is eminently directionable, which is a good thing, and there are four... Six poles that are proposed. They are all singles, and let's see what the height is. I always have trouble reading these charts that they put on our plans. The poles meet the ordinance height.
I guess my question was, is there any on the backside by where that wooded area is?
Okay. So, there is a pole, a light located right here in this location. That's a typical... So, wherever you see these large letters, that's a light pole.
Perfect.
Right?
That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and there's one in the middle, too, among the parking spaces.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. The proposed conservation easement, is that existing?
Yes, it's existing. It's not proposed. It was all part of the application from 2012.
Okay, 'cause I looked on a tax map, and I didn't see it, so I wasn't sure if it was existing or not. My other question, to the top of that parking lot, there's like a kidney-shaped piece of property. Is that gonna be ground level with the... Because right now, it's all low, am I correct?
Yes.
Because I made a site inspection out there, and I did see the freshwater vegetation, and you said there's a permit to fill that in, right?
It's already been filled.
Well, when I was out there a couple of days ago, it looked low to me, but maybe it is filled in a couple of days.
So, it's been filled already. I think it was even lower before.
Oh, okay. So, but it's gonna... Is everything gonna be low, then?
No, it's going to be brought up to grade so that the proposed building...
So, they're gonna be bringing in more fill?
Yes.
Okay. And again, that kidney-shaped piece on the north, that's just gonna be ground level with the rest of the parking lot?
I'm not sure.
It's like a vacant... Just north of the proposed parking lot. It's like kinda triangular.
It's gonna be a little slope down to the road.
It'll be slope?
It slopes down towards the road.
Okay, once they fill it in.
Right, they're gonna fill up higher than, and then it's gonna slope down toward the road.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move it up to the public. Any questions to this witness? Seeing no hands, close the public.
All right, Ms. Chairman. Have my traffic engineer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over 40 years of traffic and transportation planning experience, have testified in over 2,000 site plan applications, and have been qualified in New Jersey... Have testified in over two thousand site plan applications and have been qualified in New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
You're accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennel, you were also the former engineer for the township of Aldbridge.
We did approximately ten years ago, yes.
Okay, all right.
Really? Ten?
Maybe, maybe even longer, I don't, it's, time flies.
Yep, all right, so, uh, Mr. Kennel, I know that you did an analysis of the traffic, uh, that would be generated on this site. Uh, you also did some parking counts for the existing site. So if you could give the board, uh, the benefit of your analysis and also recognize the fact that thanks to Ms. Sawant, you picked up eleven parking spaces, uh, to abate the variance somewhat, so.
I'll take that into consideration. Yes, our, our analysis is summarized in a report dated July thirty, twenty twenty-four. That was prepared in conjunction with this, uh, application. And as far as the, the first task is, we had traffic data collected along Spring Valley Road and determined that the, the weekday morning peak hours from eight thirty to nine thirty AM and the afternoon from five to six PM. On Spring Valley Road along the site frontage, there's approximately two hundred and fifty vehicles, two-way during the morning peak hour and approximately four hundred vehicles in the PM peak hour being the heavier time period and more critical. The next phase of our analysis considered the, uh, proj- traffic projections associated with the proposed use. The architecturals and the site planner reviewed included what we see today as far as the restaurant and the brewer, microbrewery. And in our analysis, we consider that as one type of use. And typically what we do is we consult the trip generation manual prepared by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And I considered the use as a high turnover restaurant type use for, for both, uh, tenants. And provided projections where the, the PM peak hour traffic projection would be about approximately seventy-two vehicles. The weekend would be seventy-six vehicles. Based on your site engineers review, they had raised the issue that one, the IT has updated their trip generation manual and that is correct within the last couple of months. They've published a twelfth edition. And that it would be suggested to use the taproom land use code for the, um, the microbrewery. In doing that, using the twelfth edition and breaking out the two, uh, tenants, the afternoon peak hour is forty-one trips, so it's less than what we had utilized. So again, showing that we had a more conservative approach. And as far as the Saturday peak hour, using the new IT data, the projections were sixty-nine vehicles where we used seventy-six. So again, we're in line, if not a little more conservative in what we have, uh, provided, um, as part of this application. So generally speaking, we're generally in the same area. The one other comment raised was about the hotel use and the fact that the current Hampton Inn is a limited stay versus if it has the meeting space, it becomes a hotel with other amenities. So we looked at that traffic generation between, uh, a limited stay hotel versus a hotel with other amenities. And in the PM peak hour, the additional traffic generation is approximately fourteen vehicles during the peak hour. And on Saturday, it's one vehicle. So again, generally the same, the, the traffic projection we provided, I'm confident, even though with the updated trip generation manual is still a good representation of what would take place on this site with the new building. There was also a question raised that should have been done a level of service analysis, which I'm sure you've heard that uh, testimony before on other applications. So I did do a, a weekday PM level service analysis at the site driveway. And it was determined that because of the low volumes on Spring Valley Road and the, based on the traffic projections that we had in, in our analysis, that that driveway would operate a level of service B. Now, we always rate an intersection from A to F. The design target is level of service C to D. We determined that there would be average vehicle delay of eleven to twelve vehicles, meaning that that driveway can operate safely and efficiently. Now to what everybody's been talking about, parking. So as it relates to parking, between myself and, and my staff, we conducted numerous, uh, parking observations. Some of them are summarized in the appendix of the report we provided, where we conducted counts in December of two thousand and twenty-three, where we did counts from, uh, ten to eleven PM. And the reason for that is hotels' peak parking demand, and especially one of this, uh, nature, is generally after nine PM. Cause most people are, are here and staying at the hotel because they have other activities, visiting family, events, other things. And this is a place basically put their head down. And, um, uh, y- their peak parking accumulation for hotels or similar to what is, uh, existing usually happens from nine to ten PM and then into the, you know, overnight. So we did counts on Friday night, Saturday night, as well as Sunday morning at six thirty to capture those people that were there overnight. And again, the peak, um, parking rate was fifty-five vehicles on site where we have a hundred and thirteen spaces. So we're approximately fifty percent of the parking supply and based on information provided by the, uh, the operator, there were approximately eighty-seven rooms booked. So we're eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of capacity, which is from my experience is typical. Hotels generally or very rarely book every single room. It's usually an eighty to ninety percent occupancy level. So again, that represents a good, um, is a good representation of, of, um, the parking data we have as to the hotel operation. There are additional counts conducted in May of two thousand and twenty-four, again on Friday and Saturday. And then I've made observations myself in March of twenty-four and June of twenty-four. And again, the, the data we collected in December of twenty-three was the, the highest, um, number of vehicles on site with fifty-five during all those time periods. Now we have to take into consideration the, the proposed uses. The primary traffic generator would be the two tenants on the first floor, as we've heard the testimony earlier. The second floor is intended to be used generally for hotel guests. And so therefore that, those vehicles are already on site. You may have some others that are local visiting, uh, the events or taking advantage of when the hotel guests utilize them. But as far as the restaurant's concerned, again, with the indoor and outdoor seating, we have sixty-six seats. The industry standard is one parking space per three seats, which would mean that the restaurant, which is, is on the small side at around twenty-three hundred square feet, would have a, a, a peak demand of twenty-two vehicles. The microbrewery has as many as thirty-four seats. Again, it's not a very large space, it's, uh, eighteen, nineteen hundred square feet with thirty-four seats. And I used a different rate, I used one space per two seats. And that again equates to seventeen vehicles parked on site. So our calculations show that there'd be thirty-nine vehicles on site or generated by those two first-floor tenants. And when you consider what we observed at the hotel, we're expecting the peak demand is gonna be around a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen vehicles parked on site. Where we're providing a hundred and sixty parking spaces. And what's important to note is the hotel peak period is not, won't be coincidental with the restaurant and the microbrewery. There's a shared parking phenomena. Never mind the fact that the projections I get, I provided as far as, uh, parking demand for the two, um, tenants on the first floor, did not take into consideration credits associated with, uh, patrons of the hotel that would be utilizing those two u- two uses. So when you take all that into consideration, it's my opinion that the number of parking spaces, the parking supply now going up to a hundred and seventy-one will be more than adequate because it's, it's, it's my opinion that the peak demand here, well, maybe one fifteen, a hundred and twenty, but there's plenty of reserved spaces to accommodate, um, all three uses on the site, especially considering the synergy that we expect between the three uses and the fact that they don't have coincidental peak parking periods.
All right, so just, just to summarize and just kinda tie it all together with numbers here. And, and also let me ask you this preliminary question, I think you alluded to it. The peak, uh, the peak hour, the peak time for a restaurant or a microbrew would be in the early evening?
Well, I would say more so for the restaurant and, and the, the brewery will be a little later in the evening. So I mean, I would, if this can be a barbecue place, I would expect again, their peak times are gonna be from five to eight. Maybe till nine on, on a Friday or Saturday, but it definitely tail off after nine PM.
And, and the peak, peak demand for parking in the hotel is generally between nine and ten PM. So by the time the restaurant peak is over, the hotel peak would then come in.
Correct.
And according to your traffic counts, which are, uh, which are accurate traffic counts, what your, I guess what your, summary of your testimony is that we have a parking lot right now in the hotel, which is probably at fifty percent capacity.
Correct, and even if I extrapolated to all hundred rooms being occupied, that means sixty-three, sixty-four cars on the site.
All right, so sixty-three cars on a hundred and thirteen parking, a hundred and thirteen, uh, parking space lot. And, uh, the additional sixty-three spaces that we're providing, uh, for the new building, uh, your testimony is again based on parking, uh, based on number of spaces that need to be provided for patrons. We have sixty-three and we've got thirty-nine as the peak number.
That's correct. And that's without taking any credit for patrons of the hotel that would be.
Correct.
At these two uses.
All right, and, uh, in terms of, I have a few questions just in the report, but in terms of circulation, any, any issues with circulation, any issues with, uh, fire circulation, any, anything of that nature, Mr. Kennel?
No, I reviewed the plans prepared by Crest and their truck turning templates and I find that this site has been designed to provide positive onsite circulation, not only for passenger vehicles, but for large wheelbase vehicles serving this site.
All right, and, um, in terms of site, site distances, uh, if you can just comment on that, I know there was a, a, a comment made by, uh.
That they, they were looking for the site triangles, but based on my observations, there is a, I'll say a horizontal curve and we're on the outside of that, which then allows us to optimize our sight lines. Uh, as far as, based on my observations, we meet and exceed the recommended, um, site distance for the posted speed limit of Spring Valley Road.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions of Mr. Kennel, certainly he's available for any questions.
Thank you, uh, let's go to our professionals. Mr. Darje?
I, I don't have, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions for Mr. Kennel.
Okay, thank you, Nina?
Me neither.
Eric?
I just have one question, you, you said for, for peak for the hotel, you said sixty-four?
Well, we recorded fifty-five and that was with eighty-seven rooms booked that evening. So what I'm say- saying is if all hundred rooms were booked and we extrapolated our peak observation there, when it would come out to be sixty-three, sixty-four vehicles on site. And based on my experience, hotels generally do not book a hundred percent, they're usually on.
Well, I agree, I agree with that, I mean, I, I don't know if I agree with, if a hundred rooms are booked, there's only gonna be sixty-four, cause there's statute to it?
Well, what, what happens, as, as the applicant indicated, they have weekends where people come into town because they go into sporting events. And generally what happens here, you have the parents and then, uh, the children will have their own room. So you'll get two rooms out of one vehicle, so that's kinda why the numbers are what they are.
Yeah, it's, when I look at it, I just try to look at worst-case scenarios, if there's a hundred rooms, it's a hundred cars. So it lets us, lets us play that out. If there were a hundred, a hundred rooms booked, which I'm sure the applicant would, would love that on a weekend.
Of course, of course.
Um, I see the smile. And so if there's a hundred rooms with a hundred cars, is seventy-one, an additional seventy-one spots enough based off the calculations that you have for the, for the proposed space?
Yes, they are, and again, if they were booked a hundred percent, their peak demand of the hotel generally occurs after nine, ten PM. When the other uses.
I'm asking Armageddon, as everyone's trying to park at once, right?
But again, we have to take into consideration.
I understand that, I'm just trying to, I've seen where breweries and microbreweries far exceed any and all expectations. There's not a single microbrewery in this town. When one opens, there will be two hundred cars trying to get there, regardless of what the occupancy is. I, I am gaming this out in real life, not in, not in a statistical, um, way. I've seen if you go up Route thirty-four in Coltsenek and you go to Source Brewing. Source Brewing is, is literally, is jam-packed and there is an additional building in front of it that is extremely hard, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to play worst-case scenarios.
Well, I'm very familiar with that site and I, I think that's a whole different type of, uh, operation. And that's more of a regional draw where I'm looking, this would be more of a local draw, given the size of the.
Sixty-eight thousand people in this town, just so you know.
Well, but, but again, given the size of the microbrewery, and obviously they have to have, uh, beer at it.
No, I know, I understand, but I'm just trying to understand, so the building itself, what is the, what is the parking requirement just for that particular building?
For the second building?
Yes, yes.
I'm saying based on the number of seats, it's, uh, be thirty-nine, thirty-nine to forty.
Thirty-nine to forty for both the, for the first, for the first floor?
Correct.
So if you had a worst-case scenario, a hundred, you're still, you're saying, your testimony is that it's still in excess of.
We'll have a surplus.
Let's say twenty-five, um, spots additional.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, to my left, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have one question, then.
Okay.
Mr. Snacks, I don't know if you, if, uh, Ms. Totten was the right person to answer the question or, or maybe the, the operator.
Sure.
The refuse, how is refuse being handled for the new, the two restaurants now?
Well, I think the plan was to, uh, have just the, the existing trash enclosed for the hotel, uh, handle the refuse for this building. Um, if need be, if there's a concern about that, we certainly could, uh.
Yeah, the, 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 the size of the, the enclosure is a concern obviously, cause you have one, looks like twenty-foot by twelve-foot enclosure for the hotel. And then restaurants I know do produce, I mean, you know, a decent amount of refuse. So I would expect a, a refuse enclosure for the restaurant.
Yeah, I would expect a refuse enclosure closer to the restaurant building than use the one that is there for the hotel.
If, if the concern is you wanna see something on the new, on the site where the new building is.
Yes, I think so.
We may lose a parking space or two, but we'll, or maybe not, we'll work with you to see where we could, we could fit it in.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Just because I think, I think a refuse enclosure probably is necessary, especially for proximity too, cause usually restaurants, you're carrying restaurant waste.
Okay, we'll, we'll work with you on that issue.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
Are you done?
That's, I'm done now.
Okay.
I might think of something on the drive home, but.
We're good, right? Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public. Again, seeing no public, close the public portion, thank you.
Thank you.
Next question is?
Uh, yes, just for about two minutes, uh.
Good.
Okay, yeah. I told you I'd, I'd get done by ten, it may be a minute before, but. All right, Ms. Ms. Totten, you're still under oath and, um, I want you to be brief, but I think you have to address the variance relief, is that correct?
Yes, yes, so I'd, I'd like to summarize the variances that I believe we need. Um, there's one for parking, obviously. There's, um, also parking stall size. We have a couple, a few ten-by-eighteens where they are but landscaping, uh, so that the overhang is on the landscaping. Um, the loading area is required to be ten by sixty and we have fifteen by thirty-five for the new building, which accommodates the type of loading that would be associated with this type of facility. Uh, we also have parking within fifteen feet of the building. I mean, sorry, it's supposed to be fifteen feet, we are twelve feet, um, which I think is adequate. We have adequate sidewalks and landscaping there. Uh, and then the parking itself, um, hundred and ninety is required and we have hopefully a hundred and seventy-one or thereabouts. Um, we have definitely a hundred and sixty. So I, uh, would like to just, uh, group these somewhat together in my planning testimony too. I hope everybody agrees with the variances. Great. Aces, okay, so let me just move on to. All right, so these, these will be, uh, C two. So these, these will be C-two variances, the flexible C. You've heard the testimony with regard to the use and relationship between the hotel and the microbrewery, as well as the operations of the, the microbrewery event hall, the new building. You've heard the testimony regarding the circulation, the traffic impact, and the parking capacity. Plus, you've heard that excellent suggestion by your planner. I don't know, does the double parking require another variance? Okay, so we also need a variance for no aisle space between the parking. So with, with all of the testimony you've heard, the positive criteria or the special reasons, we are carrying out the zoning, the promotion of zoning by G to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, and commercial and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jerseyans. So we're providing additional opportunities to use the hotel space with these amenities and the opportunity for utilization of shared parking. I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civil design and arrangements. And you have heard, again, how we probably have more parking than we need. Let's hope that's the case, with, even if the hotel is full and we have both of the micro, both of the restaurants full. So the shared parking reduces the parking field and impervious cover and the look of a sea of parking. So that's a positive. H is to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of these facilities and routes, which result in congestion of light. So we're providing a place for the people in the hotel to be able to go and have meals and some entertainment. So you're taking that traffic off the street, plus you're providing shared parking as a result of that. And this is all specifically for this project, which is an existing limited-use hotel that we want to expand those uses of or the opportunities with that. With regard to the negative criteria, this proposal will not have a substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. The hotel and the parking already exist. This proposal, and its parking is, and its parking, I don't know what I wrote here. It's located in an area that's surrounded by a contractor yard, car dealerships, as well as Route Eighteen. So there's no substantial detriment to the public good of construction of this building and its parking and the shared parking aspect of it. There's also no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance because these are requested for this very specific property. And you have seen, or heard, I should say, the testimony with regard to the parking capacity and accounts and that the parking is adequate as provided, particularly with the additional eleven spaces. So, let's see. Therefore, it is my opinion that the deviations from the ordinance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zone and zone plan, and that the benefits of all of this outweigh the detriments.
Ms. Totten, just, I'd be remiss if I didn't also address this issue, and I meant to do it sooner. We do not need a floor area ratio variance, is that correct?
That's correct.
In fact, you provided a memorandum to Mr. Darje and to Ms. Sawant stating that, giving accurate numbers as to the existing floor, floor area and footprint of the hotel.
That's correct.
And if you add the new building on to that, we come up with a total of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two square feet. What's permitted under the ordinance for the floor area ratio is a total floor area of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet. So we're actually in excess by a hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Yes, so just to make sure you all understand where this information came from, we have the site plans for the original hotel through the revision in two thousand and fifteen, when the hotel was under construction. And the floor area on that plan is less than what I think was perhaps in the resolution of approval for the project. Additionally, we were able to review the architectural plans, and that floor area was even less than what was on the site plan that was approved. So, and those were the construction documents, not the floor plans and elevations that are presented to you. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting there's these people all the way down here to you for your consideration. Well, it was the zoning board, actually, but for consideration at that time. So we took the more conservative of the numbers, which is the number that was on the site plan, and used that. And that's why we, and I understand how the people that reviewed it looked at the resolution of approval. They may not have had access to the documents we did. So that's what my memo summarizes, and that's why we don't need a, a variance for floor area ratio because we could expand the building another hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Totten. And I'll actually take the blame for the resolution because I prepared it probably in 2012 when it was in front of the zoning board. Sorry for that confusion to the professional staff. Okay, anything else, Ms. Totten?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our professionals.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Chairman.
Okay, to my right? Anybody to my left? Okay. Well, I think the project, if it gets passed, it's going to be beneficial, I hope. Maybe I can go to a class reunion without going to Florida. That would be nice. Let me open it to the public. Seeing no hands, seeing no public, close the public portion. Mr. Sodillo?
Yes, before I give a summary, I just want to clarify. At one point, the applicant was agreeing to restrict it to only to the, to the patrons of the hotel with regard to the second floor use. There was discussions of making, adding the tandem parking, that that may alleviate the need for that restriction. I just want to make sure when I summarize the conditions, is that, are we saying that condition is no longer necessary as what of the conditions for the board based upon the testimony? Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what the consensus, because it kind of went back and forth a little bit on it. So I wanted to make sure I was clear.
From an engineering standpoint, I, I would concur with, with the general sentiment that the board just expressed because given the, Mr. Kennel's testimony about the actual parking demand and also the additional parking that Ms. Sawant, with her magic wand, created this evening, I, I think would lend itself to allowing, plus that use would probably be at an off-peak time as well. So I, I think it would be wise.
Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, a vote in favor of this application would be a vote granting the requested major preliminary and final site plan approval with the variances and design waivers that has been testified to this evening. In addition to the, the typical conditions of approval that the board requires, the board, the applicant will comply or work with the professionals to comply with the professional reports that were submitted. They will work with the board professionals with regard to the final architectural design of the building, specifically with regard to the restaurant and microbrewery facades. One second, I know I have another. They will revise the plans to add the eleven tandem spaces, or up to eleven, I should say, tandem spaces, depending on the restrictions that they may face physically and with regard to any existing easements to the plans. And then finally, they will work with the borough, the board professionals with regard to seeing if they can create a new refuse enclosure closer to the restaurant. And that's what I have as the conditions.
Do we have to open up to any general comments?
Oh, I thought we did that, I'm sorry. Did I miss it?
No, I did it for this one.
Oh, okay, no, yeah, we do. I apologize.
We have to open up for general comments. Seeing no hands, close that, thank you.
That's okay.
So my summary still stands.
Right, okay. Okay. We're looking for a motion.
I'll move it.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Mocella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ten oh five.
Right, very good, very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
And before, before, before I ask for a motion, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Could I get?
That's why I had some kind of food to break.
Okay, okay. My comment about Thanksgiving still stands. Okay. Should I open it up now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to open for, for general comments to the public. Seeing no public, I close that. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Motion to close.
All in favor? All right.